Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
All right, welcome everyone. My name is Mike Peterson, the mayor of City Cotwood Heights. And tonight, it's, of course, March 2nd. It's Tuesday. It's just after 5:00 PM. This is, again, the city of Cotwood Heights. It's our work session where we discuss many areas of interest to constituents and, of course, to the council. And to begin the meeting, because we're meeting virtually, I have a determination that authorizes to do so, and I'll read that now. Hopefully, I don't have to read it too many more times because it's a tongue twister. But anyway, pursuant to Utah Code Annotated 52-4-2074, the city's mayor is a chair of the city council and of the Community Development Renewal Agency. Oh, that's the wrong one. Nope, I don't have the other ones. We'll have to do this. So as a chair of the city council, I hereby determine that conducting the meeting of this body on the day at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. As well recognized, a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by a global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at the anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. Therefore, we're meeting online through Zoom. Following your agenda, we have some special guests with us tonight, as the council is well aware. As the mayor of our city, I represent the city as a member of the Central Wasatch Commission. It's been in existence now, I guess, for four years. So I was involved in the first meetings and the creation. And we have with us to, tonight, the deputy director, Blake Perez, who's been leading the staff side of looking at mountain transportation system. We also have with us Mayor Dan Canute from the town of Brighton. And Dan is the chair of the Transportation Committee. And in coming months, the commission will be attempting to build a consensus on a recommendation for a mountain transportation system. This is tied directly into UDOT's EIS process. And so for the last several months, and actually the last two years, we've been going through a very thorough process, looking at standards and values, et cetera, under Blake's direction. And Mayor Canute and I have been on that committee and the mayor of Park City as well. But I've asked Blake to be here tonight with Mayor Canute's help to kind of update our city council as to what's happened up to this date, talk about the matrix, talk about the evaluation, the timetable, because I'm going to be asking our city council to give me feedback so that when I represent you at the future CWC meeting on this issue. So Blake, we've got about 20 minutes. And so if you take about 15, allow a couple minutes for questions, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Good to see you, council members. It's been a while since I've seen you. I think we were here back in December. But good to see you all. And we'll get started. We're going to try and keep our presentation tight and allow for a little bit of dialogue there at the end. But I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Mayor Canute from town of Brighton will start us off. And away we go.
Hey, council, welcome. I have to tell you, first of all, it's been a pleasure to work with Mayor Peterson. He really understands what's going on. And for you, most importantly, he really protects the interests of the city of Cotwood Heights. Could I have the next slide, Blake, number two? So this is, the CWC is a unique effort of local governments operated by consensus. We always try to come with consensus on this to address longstanding issues and aspiration for the Central Wasatch Mountains. Next one, please, there. The members include all of the adjacent cities and jurisdictions of the canyons, also Park City and Son of County. UTA has an ex officio board member, Colton Christensen. He's great to have on the board. He answers a lot of our questions about bus issues. On this chart, you can see our project timeline for this year. In addition to transportation in Lansville, CWC is also working, is embarking on a visitor use study, hopefully starting later this month. That'll give us an idea of the capacity of these canyons. Soon, the CWC will release, will be releasing a call for short-term projects to implement this summer. What we've tried to do is we've tried to really focus on some deliverables, to get some stuff done. These are quick little shovel-ready projects that really meet the values of mountain accord. Finally, at the year-end, we'll have finished the environmental dashboard. The dashboard will provide real-time feedback on the health of the various ecological components of the mountains. Next slide is, in 2020, we embarked on a journey aiming to arrive at a proposed framework for comprehensive year-round transportation systems. This includes not just the Cotwood Canyons, but also Park City. We're looking at busing in Park City. A lot of elements to this. There are a lot of moving parts to all of this. As you can see, we do, we do kind of fold over into Park City. If you look in the upper left or upper right corner, that's all Park City elements. This emphasizes the regional scope of our whole mountainous transportation process. Here's the CWC's timeline to date. Over the course of the year, we've developed scoping reports at several public comment periods, developed draft alternatives, did an online game called Design Your Transit System, where folks could invest in options they thought would meet the goals, and hosted several stakeholder meetings. That was a pretty cool little thing. Everybody got to see how it would work in, kind of in their world. But it was kind of a cool little tool. Next, please, yeah. Since the beginning of the year, the CWC board has immersed itself in learning more about the various modes. By modes, we mean, do we widen the road and put more buses? Do we put in the gondola option? Do we put in the train option? What we did is we got, we got all of the experts, and we gave them each time individually so that they could educate our entire board. You know, a lot of these mayors have a lot of balls in the air, and they really needed a deep dive to ask questions on how these modes work. The next step is to arrive at consensus recommendation for the regional mountainous transportation system. The thing is, we've got, all the players are on this commission. We've got the knowledge. What we needed was the facts to make an educated decision. And I have to say, Mayor Peterson has been very involved in this, especially with the Wasatch Boulevard element. He's very aware of how you guys hold that, that big element of this puzzle. With that, I'll just say, we really need to look at this in a big, big picture. We've got to look at this in a 50-year model. You know, you look at Europe, they built trains 100 years ago to the top of the Jungfrau. They go right through the Iber. They've got trains everywhere. I'm kind of partial to the train for Little Cottonwood. The thing about Little Cottonwood, we've had to focus on Little Cottonwood right now because of the UDOT EIS that's in place. I keep saying, we kind of have a gun to our head. If we want to have any input on this, we've got to have it in the next month or two. So we've really focused all of our effort right now on Little Cottonwood. I'm hoping, as a Brighton resident, that soon we can start talking about Big Cottonwood Canyon. But right now, we really have to focus on Little Cottonwood Canyon, because that's where the money is from the legislature, and that's where UDOT's focus is. So with that, I'll turn this over to Blake, and I'll be available to answer any questions that anyone has. I've put a lot of effort into this. We kind of have a good feeling on how we need to go here. So Blake, you want to take it away?
Thanks, Mayor Canute. I really want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about what the Little Cottonwood Canyon EIS is, and how does the mountain transportation system plan for the CWC fold together and mesh together. As you all know, the EIS alternatives are focused on seasonal mobility, winter season mobility along Wasatch Boulevard and State Road 210. All of the alternatives, and I know you've all done your homework on the alternatives, but it's a combination of modes and demand management strategies that they're suggesting in each of the alternatives. So they do call for tolling and reduced parking, and then a combination of either just buses or a bus feeder system to a cog rail or an aerial system. And their focus, that number, that magic number that they're focused on is 30 years from now, about trying to shift approximately 1,000 people per hour onto a transit option. They're anticipating in 2050, a little over 3,200 people per hour on the 30th busiest day. And so they want to make sure about a third of those people are moving onto transit. Now, with the MTS, with CWC's approach, and like Mayor Canute said earlier, this is a much broader regional alternative that builds and augments the EIS. Our values are laid in with the Mountain Accord. So these are our objectives and our attributes, our conditions. They're laid forth in the Mountain Accord, and we've gone back and revisited those. A key component to what would be recommended from the CWC is a year-round service that meets the varying needs of those who are accessing the mountains. So beyond just delivering users to the resorts, but the backcountry users, the hikers, the photographers, or those who just want to go up the canyon and then turn back around. The CWC has taken a strong position of trying to improve upon and build up or scale up the amount of people per hour that will be accessing these canyons in 30 years from now. Is 1,000 people per hour sufficient? And what can we do to reduce the amount of vehicles, but still allow for that access for visitors into the canyons? And again, similar to the EIS, this is going to be a combination of modes and demand management strategies. There will be no, you know, one thing that can reduce the congestion and mobility challenges along Wasatch Boulevard, in Big and Little Cottonwood. It needs to be a comprehensive package of transportation solutions, demand management strategies, but also land use policy. And that's where our National Conservation Recreation Area Act comes into play as well. So we've got this nice package that we're trying to put together, build consensus around that meets the goals of both the EIS alternatives and then the CWC Mountain Transportation System Initiative. I just do, I want to spend a few minutes about Cotwood Heights specifically, and the importance of the piece of the puzzle that Cotwood Heights has. Mayor Peterson is great at reminding us of the benefit of Cotwood Heights being the city between two canyons, and how residents along Wasatch Boulevard in particular are feeling the impacts on those, on year-round, actually, of people visiting those canyons. So this, from the CWC's perspective, we are fully aware of the importance of the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan. We know the time and effort and resources that the city has put into developing that master plan. Our policy has been to defer and to support the local jurisdictions on any of the plans. So however Cotwood Heights would like to pursue or engage, or what they want to see with Wasatch Boulevard, the CWC totally supports. In addition to Wasatch Boulevard, Cotwood Heights is also dependent on the watershed. And so we take into account Salt Lake City's Department of Public Utilities watershed management plan, and they're actually going through an updated process of that plan this year they're embarking on. So we want to track along with them and make sure that what we're suggesting complies with those management plans. As you all know, back in November, UDOT released two new alternatives that had significant impacts on Utah open lands. We recognize, the CWC recognizes the importance of that land. And in fact, we contributed resources to preserving that space over there by the mouth of Little Cottonwood Canyon. So we got right into the fray, you know, hour one, from when those alternatives were released, trying to figure out where UDOT was coming from, what alternatives to the alternatives they could present that wouldn't impact that really critical, important, open space that so many of us in our region contributed to and wanted to make sure it was preserved as open space. And I'm sure Mayor Peterson shares with you is the role of Cotwood Heights within the CWC. Mayor Peterson does an amazing job, like we've reiterated, about the impacts to Wasatch Boulevard. So the role of Cotwood Heights is to inform and let us know about their worldview on the alternatives and the transportation solutions that we have, and have, and influence those decisions from your local jurisdiction planning process. And so it's also a great opportunity for us to hear about the local jurisdiction's preferences within this regional scale. Not only are the residents of Cotwood Heights feeling those impacts on Wasatch Boulevard, but also those who are visiting the canyons as well. You all know that it'll be difficult to encourage people to go to other canyons, but it's a beautiful place. So it's great to hear from the local jurisdiction level their plans and interests and visions, and how can we apply that to a regional scale and talking with Mayor Peterson's peers and colleagues at that level as well. Also, I wanted to touch upon CWC's role with the EIS process. We are a participating agency. And so we have regular communications with the EIS team, and then, of course, at the upper executive administration level as well. And we provide feedback from our process, from our MTS process. We have been providing feedback to UDOT as well. And we hope that the CWC will be able to continue to provide that feedback moving forward. We do represent, the CWC does represent, like Mayor Canute said, the 10, or excuse me, the nine-member jurisdictions in and adjacent to the Central Wasatch Mountains. And our MTS approach and lens is a little bit broader. And so there is that conflict and dynamic with what UDOT is doing, but that's kind of why we operate. We have multiple stakeholders, dozens of different stakeholders, and it's inherent that we're going to have that tension in there, but we're working to work to build consensus on that. And so when we do make a recommendation or suggestion to UDOT, we hope that it's thoroughly vetted, and that it's something that each of our member jurisdictions can be proud of, and that aligns with their visions and interests. That's our quick recap. I do want to mention, what we've done literally in the past 24 hours and where we've been at, I'm going to stop sharing if that's okay, is yesterday at the CWC meeting, we had the UDOT EIS team, and we had a great dialogue, questions about how do each of the alternatives fit within the CWC's MTS process and vision, some great dialogue. But then, over the past couple of months, CWC staff has developed this really dynamic, big evaluation matrix. And we took each of those values that were important to the CWC and Mountain Accord, and we really gave it a very simple 0 through 3 grade of each of the alternatives. And that will be up on our website either today. It's already up on public notices website. I'll be sure to email Tim that spreadsheet, so you can see how we evaluated it. And we basically gave it a 0, 1, 2, or 3 score to lessen the dynamic, the depth and breadth of this complicated process. 0, not meeting any of the scores, and of course, 3 being the best. But we gave it an evaluation through the EIS lens, and then the Mountain Transportation System lens. So this is not meant as a recommendation. It's just an initial valuation. And then we'll be scrubbing it over the next couple of weeks with some of our mode experts, city staff, jurisdictional staff, who have been engaged in our process. So Mike Johnson's been dialed in on our process all the way through. We've been in regular communication throughout the process. So that evaluation matrix, we'll go through a little bit more work. And on Friday, March 19th, we have our commissioner summit, where we've set aside a few hours to see where our commission's at, and to see if we can build consensus on a regional mountain transportation system. And that's, I want to just kind of turn it over now for Q and A. So thank you for the time.
Well, thank you, Blake. And, America, we appreciate your time. And like Blake said, we spent a couple hours yesterday, and many, many other hours trying to become educated. And the matrix, he's talking down, I have a copy here in front of me. It's a lot of information. It's just one more tool. It's not the defining tool, but it's one more tool to facilitate the process. And, you know, we talked about environmental impacts. You know, we talked about, you know, we talked about the snowsheds, with there's some debate on that. We talked about how many cars you take off the road. We talked about looking at 2050. And so, and we talked about tolling. There's a lot of issues that go with, you know, this decision. But nothing more important to me and our city council is, when you look at these alternatives, the direct impact on our city. Wasatch Boulevard is one impact, but also the regional parking, either proposed Lakai or gravel pit. And those are part of almost every discussion. And I appreciate CWC members accepting me, constantly reminding them that we have residents, 35,000 people who live on Wasatch Boulevard, above and below, and that direct impact. And they've been very open and sensitive and supported my dialogue in that regard. But again, I need the council's education and feedback going forward. So let's take a couple minutes. Is there any council that has a question that they would like to ask?
I'm happy to go first. And thank you, Blake, and Mayor Canute, for your presentation. I know you guys have spent a lot of time, and that helps our city to have that support from you. However, I guess I shouldn't say however, because I appreciate how you all are thinking about this. And I can see where you're going, which I believe is where I would, I would like you to go in representing our city, and that is a more regional review of the issue. And I guess what I've struggled with, and I've shared this with Ralph numerous times, and UDOT, is that we're looking at a 2050 transportation solution, 30 years away, to your point, Blake. And yet, we have this EIS that's in this little box, and we need to come up with the decision. It doesn't line up with your MTS. It doesn't really, it's just sort of throwing paint against the wall. And I struggle because I'm still not seeing sort of short, medium, and long-term solutions for the problem, because it seems to me that out of the EIS, we should get some short-term solutions that we could use to alleviate some of the problems. While you guys finish the MTS, and we look at a more regional perspective, it seems to me that I don't personally have enough information. I don't even have your matrix. You're looking for a decision in April from us. The mayor's going to have this meeting with you on March 19th. We're supposed to influence the mayor. I'm trying to understand how I, personally representing the most impacted district for this whole plan, can possibly make a determination within that timeframe. I'm not, no fault of you guys. And I struggle with UDOT, because it seems like their mindset is very narrow and provincial, and it really affects all of my constituents. And so I guess my question is, if, as a commission, you all were to make the recommendation that, okay, the EIS is great, but provide us some of these short and medium-term solutions while we figure out the gondola, the train, right? All those longer-term things while we look for the regional, who would be against us? Who would be in opposition to some kind of recommendation like that in the EIS? Because to me, if Brighton, Mill Creek, Salt Lake County, Sandy, Park City, if all those people that are impacted most are saying, timeout, let's look regionally, let's talk short-term, who would oppose that? Because I just, I appreciate, I appreciate the work that's been done on the EIS, but you can't just take a problem and isolate it like that and come up with a solution that's going to work for 2050.
And that may be, that may be the consensus or position that comes out, is that, what do we, I mean, it takes years to implement any system. What's in between? So that may be one of the caveats that's added to any recommendation is what's the phasing approach, and how is that articulated? So yeah, that's a great question to throw out. Yeah.
And I would agree with that. And first of all, I would say, you're welcome. Yeah, you're welcome at any of our meetings to follow through. There is a lot of in-depth information that comes out. UDOT is definitely out of path. There's no question. That's why we, you know, what my analogy is always, we've got a gun to our head. We have to focus on Little Cottonwood right now. They are moving forward. Whether we can impact that and get it changed, we already impacted it. We got them to bring the train back. It was off the table completely. We at least got them to bring it back and put some effort into it. But we've got to start somewhere. It's kind of the, it's kind of the bites of the elephant. You know, we've been working on this for 30 years. It is time that we actually move forward with some elements of this, and we've got to start somewhere. And from what I can see personally, it looks like it's Little Cottonwood right now.
Oh, I, I'll just give you some background about me. I have three ski racers at Snowbird. One of them is at Snowbird every day. My office is up Little Cottonwood Canyon. I've lived between the canyons for 15 years. I've sat in traffic for four hours while my three-year-old has to go to the bathroom. I've texted Dave Fields while I've been in that position. Like, I know this situation as much or more as anybody else, other than the people that live there. And so we're looking at a problem, like that problem where we're sitting in our car for two or three hours. When you look at the whole year, 365 days a year, we're thinking about spending $500 billion on a solution for that period of time, whatever those days are. 10 days, Blake, you would know. Is it 10 days where we're seeing those traffic times? And so I just sit here, and I think, what is the rush? Right? If we're going to do it, do it right the first time. That's what the principle I always use of Ridgecrest Elementary here in Cottonwood Heights always says. Let's solve the problem right the first time. And so I guess I'm just pleading with you all that, yes, I know, to your point, Mayor, I know we need to find a solution, but let's find the right one and work together. And I just don't understand how one agency like UDOT can just push through after committing to us that they're not going to look at parking lots along the Wasatch Boulevard, and suddenly, one of the solutions that seems to be their preferred solution, if I were to guess, is a parking garage at Lakai with a gondola. So I'm just, so Blake and Mayor, thanks for letting me vent. I'm not venting to you or at you. I'm just venting, because the only way that I think I can influence your all's decision is to let you know what people, where I live, people that can't get out of their houses, people that they leave their house in the morning on a big powder day, they left their iron on, and they can't even get back to turn off their curling iron, or are fearful that their house will catch on fire. It's people whose kids can't get to school, right? So yeah, we can
We
don't involve a 500, you know, million-dollar solution. And I feel like this short and long, medium-term solutions have just been kicked down the, you know, the highway for a $500 million gondola or train. And we'll be supportive of those solutions if they make sense, right? If they don't impact us, if there's mitigation to our city, so that my child, who's riding her bicycle to school, doesn't get hit by a car, which has happened almost two times this year, when there's no traffic. So there are a lot of things that Cottonwood Heights experiences in terms of safety. We've had one person die on Wasatch Boulevard this year. And that's, we're not talking about four, you know, two lanes in each direction. on Wasatch Boulevard this year and that's we're not talking about four, you know, two lanes in each direction. So these are really emotional things to our community. I think American Newt, you probably live in Brighton because of the quality of life. You want to go out your back door and hike with Moose and all those things. Our community wants to be able to have their kids ride their bike from the east side of Wasatch to the west side of Wasatch to see their friends, you know, their kids ride their bikes to see their friends or to school because that's the community that we live in. We live in a community because we want to be able to to do those things we want. And when you add four lanes and all these other things and you give no thought to the impact to residents because UDOT wants to push this forward because the legislature is giving them heartache. They have $70 million. They haven't spent it yet. I think people just need to relax a little bit, find the right solution, look at those short term solutions while the CWC works more at a regional perspective.
I I will, I will add this comment and and American and Blake and you does part of yesterday's discussion that two hours meeting was an emphasis on the need to not look just at Little Cottonwood Canyon. And that's the difference between the EIS and the MTS is the MTS and CWC is it needs to be a regional approach. And that should mitigate some of the amount of parking on east side. So that's that's definitely part of it. And and again, I'll continue to hammer in, of course, Wasatch Boulevard and and this is why I invited because I need to hear from the council so that I can represent those expectations.
So so my last question is Blake, it sounds like you're coming out with that matrix, which would be really helpful. Between now and March 19th, I don't know if we have time on our council, you know, at our council work session, but it sure would be nice to really dig into the details. I was hoping we'd get into a few more details tonight about comparing rail to gondola. I, you know, I looked at some of the the materials on the website for the CWC, but again, you're we're being asked to make or us for us to make a recommendation what that is. And I, like I said, I could go, I could go to the CWC like you you recommended, Mayor, but we still have Councilmember Bracken, Councilmember Bruce, maybe all of us, all five of us need to participate in that and I it sure would be helpful to hear it rather than read it because there's always things that you can interpret differently. And and to me, I I like I said, I was hoping that's what we would see today. Maybe you could come back with that matrix.
And I don't think, Blake, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we're taking a position at that meeting on the 18th. I think we're just discussing further, correct?
That's up to the flow of the commission and see where where they're at.
Because I don't think you thought you dot is not going to suggest their EIS alternative preference for several months from now. Right?
What they're planning to do is release their draft EIS this summer and then a record of decision by the end of the year.
Right. So summer, end of the year. So I assume that our so-called retreat on 18th is just to further vet the information now that we've been through all the modes and to see where people are because it's like there was a couple yesterday who were there's just still a lot of questions, Christine. I want you to be feeling sure that no one is jumped on any one thing, you know, Lauren Briefer has several major concerns on the environment. Jim Bradley spoke up again yesterday. He has some question concerns about are we going to right deck, right direction? UTA has some questions on busing and phasing and funding. So yeah, this is this is a major lift. And again, give Blake credit and Eric new for jumping on with us this year and really just try and get all the information we can and this matrix and we'll send it out. You know, and now we got yesterday, we'll send it out immediately and take a look at it and you'll you'll look at all of the information that's in there that talks about a variety of issues, but and then let me know how you feel and I'll try and represent that.
And Christine, let me I'll just answer you really quickly. I know we're on a timeline here, but but yeah, we did move up Big Cottonwood 27 years ago to 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 enjoy that lifestyle. It's gotten pretty crazy the last few years. Before that, I was a Little Cottonwood guy. I I was a Little Cottonwood guy since 1978. But um, we actually went to Sun Valley this weekend to get away from the chaos of trying to get out of our own driveway. We've got 6,000 cars on a Saturday. We can't get an ambulance out of our canyon. Right now, we're trying to focus on Little Cottonwood. Central Wasatch Commission did did put in some of our own budget to increase buses by 40% last year and this year with 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 the virus, obviously. The buses have been less effective, but in the short term, we've all agreed that buses are the short term fix and will continue to to add more buses, but they have my major limitations and the number one is they're mixed in with cars and they can't, you know, they can only do so much. This is an untenable problem right now that we can't, we can't fix it in the short term like we'd like to. We've got to look at the long term. That's going to be the real fix. We can Band-Aid it for the next little bit, but you know, what you've got is you've got Mayor Peterson, who's very well versed. I think any of these mode experts that you want to come and present to your council, whether it's the train guys, Stoddler's been great on this. Chris McCandless would, I'm sure, give you a good presentation on his on his engineering for that parking structure that the Doppelmeyer guys, they'll come and present to you and and bring you up to speed. What I would like to see in the long run is get rid of all the cars in Little Cottonwood and have a train with feeders from all over the valley and connection for light rail. I that's my grenade for the night. But I would like
It's not a grenade. I mentioned the same thing to our lobbyist and he told me I would get lynched if I said that into a legislature.
I've I've I'm done holding my tongue on this one. That's that's my long term hope is that we that we really curtail the cars in the we can't do it in Big Cottonwood. They keep telling me train doesn't work, but in Little Cottonwood, it works quite well. And if we could tie in to the light rail system, we eliminate a lot of cars if we have if we have enhanced buses coming to the feeders to that to that, we got to have a station at the bottom of the canyon, no matter what you do. But if we could feed all those with public transport to that and make it reasonably seamless, we can get people to ride it, especially if they don't have any alternative. So we can make that work. But these are all things that we've got to shake out in the next few months. But we've got to get, we've got to be there waiting. We've got to have our input to you dot before they make their decisions or they'll just make their decisions.
And we're a participating agency with with UDOT, so they have, we we have their ear. So process have some influence. Now we're running out of time, but I any other council members, Scott?
Just just real quick, there's there's Cottonwood Heights is directly dealing with two issues that are related, but then somewhat independent. Yes, getting people up and down the canyons is important. We understand that. Certainly is important to residents of Brighton, you know, Altis, Snowbird, all the ones up there. We're also dealing with you dot who's dealing with the sections of as Draper gets built out, as Sandy has been developed, the increase in traffic and getting people from those areas up to the freeway. And so they're working on that dynamic as well, just increased traffic simply from growth. And so that's why, yes, having that long term perspective of not only getting up and down the cane and getting along the the frontage or the the base of the canyons, which is again, directly in East Sandy, Draper, Cottonwood Heights, Holiday, Mill Creek. There's that dynamic as well, where where people are going, going to want to move. And so we we have to have a balancing ax and having a long term goal that we can put the correct short term steps into is definitely helpful.
So we don't make a lot of short term steps that are going in the wrong direction.
All right. Thank you, Scott. I I don't mean to push this, but I know we have two other meet, well, actually four other meetings with the call, including a closed session later tonight. So Tally, Doug, any final thoughts? Again, as Christine suggests, I'm I'm glad to discuss further and bring people back. Yeah. And to make sure that we are well represented in in our position to CWC. Doug, you're muted. Doug, you're muted.
I'm coming in a little bit late on this and I'm sorry, excuse the lateness. As far as Mayor Dan, you mentioned a little bit about the possibility of rail. It seemed like Christine Christine mentioned that seems like whenever that gets mentioned, it gets a little bit thrown in the back with the some of the other options. Is is that something that you dot will will actually look at with an open mind or are they kind of set on certain things right now?
Well, you know, we, like I say, we brought it back from the dead to the EIS, which they said they never do. So my hope is that they that they're sincere and that they will really look at it hard, you know, we've my family, we've traveled all over Europe and and to me, it's a no brainer. It's it's a very good long term solution. The train guys, you know, Stoddler is based here in Salt Lake for the US operations. They have a 400 person operation out in the west side. They're they're doing it because they they're also here and they 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 feel like they have a vested interest. They would love to see it. They put a lot of effort into it. They've given a lot of data to you dot. I hope you dots looking at, you know, Carlos Prisceras, director of you dots and an old Snowbird guy. I was friends with him when he was a bartender at the tram bar. He told me that he's got 50 major projects going and this isn't on the front of his plate. So he's he's kind of checked out on this one. Let's hope Josh Van Dura, that's the that's the that's the resident engineer on this. I I felt last night that he had a very open mind. He also used to be a bus boy at the Silver Fork back in the day, so we have a relationship. Let's hope that, let's hope that they really do have an open mind on this and and they give everything a fair, a fair hearing. That's that's what we're hanging around.
No, and when you read, you read through the matrix, you'll see that the the rail along with the tram is both ranked very high, the cog rail held its own. So it's it's not, it's wide open. There's no position yet by CWC. There's there's a lot of time to influence that. So Mary, can you, maybe you could get me a part time job waiting on tables up there as well. It sounds like
Everybody, everybody seems to do it, but but what I'll say, guys, what swayed me, the difference between rail and the gondola is the rail, they keep telling me over and over again that it's a whistle stop train. It can stop anywhere in the canyon. They can make platforms for ADA, they can do some of that, but it it is truly a whistle stop operation. The gondola goes from the base to Snowbird and then to Alton. That's the big hang up that I have with the gondola. It's basically a gondola to the ski areas where the train serves the entire canyon. That's where they got me on on their on their train, we'll say. So that's that's my feeling on it and I've I'm pretty much letting everybody know how I feel these days.
And that's good. We want people to say how they feel. That's that's what's good about this process. Again, I appreciate everyone's participation and for having this introduction. I know we've had CWC here at our meetings two or three times. We, as Christine suggests, we may invite somebody back again. We'll determine that after today's meeting, but we need to move and Blake and Mayor Dan will excuse you. And again, thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. All great. Good luck.
You've got my buy in. Thanks.
Awesome.
Thanks, Tally.
Thank you, Dan. Bye bye.
All right, we need to, looking at the agenda, review the business meeting agenda. It's it's fairly light. We don't have any presentations, but we have some action items. We have one item is approving appointments to the planning commission. Tim, do you want to introduce that just real quickly so we can move on? But I mean, Steve, I mean, Tim, what I say?
Yeah, real, real briefly, what what this would do is Bob Wild has been an alternate on the planning commission. And we we have a vacancy now. We're proposing to have him be a permanent member and we have interviewed Lucy Anderson and she is really excited about the opportunity. She would be an alternate, which means she would still be at the meetings. And then when there are those that cannot attend, she would vote. So anyway, I'm recommending that you approve the resolution related to these two items.
Okay. Any questions regarding that action item?
Um, no, I I did notice that that looks like Lucy is actually listed on our list of panelists. If we have time after between the work session and the business meeting, maybe if it's appropriate or you thought it was okay, maybe we could have her sign on and just say hello. That would be, I would request that, but that's not necessary. And if we have
We can do it right now. Just take 30 seconds.
I actually might be better in the business meeting, Mayor, if because I think she's going to as a panelist in the business meeting as well, unless you want.
Well, she wants to stay around for an hour to that's
Either way.
Yeah. All right, I'll take a suggestion. Lucy, what what district does she live in, Tim?
She is three, three.
District three and Bob Wild is in district.
One.
One, yeah, okay. All right, item 4.2 is is a resolution approving and ratifying a bid and awarding construction contract with Granite Construction Company for the Scottish Drive project, which I assume Matt has been through the bidding process and competitively bid, and it's something we budgeted. So any questions with that or any, Matt, anything else on that?
No, sir, you summed it up.
Item 4.3 is a resolution 2021 dash 10, approving consulting agreement with Blue Line Designs for the plant services for the Ferguson Canyon park component. This is where the council have an opportunity to to have input on how that off leash park area is designed. I know I have some spent a lot of time on that in my career, so I'm I'm anxious to show that information that I've gained and also hear the council's perspective that at some point we will also have an opportunity for public comment as we get something we can show them. Then then we have the consent calendar and we do have a closed session item after our this meeting to talk about real estate. Okay. Coming back to our work session quickly, we have two staff reports. The first one, Mike Johnson, you talk about the outdoor recreation grant project discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll be pretty brief. We we applied for this last year as well and did a similar presentation to the council. The the outdoor recreation grant is offered through the the governor's office of economic development. That's where it's currently housed. That may change after the legislative session, but it's a state level grant. So it's a statewide opportunity for outdoor recreation improvements. The overview is the same as it has been the the past several years, the for most projects, the maximum grant size is up to $150,000. There is a 50 50 match required. Only a portion of that can be in kind match. The rest has to be financial. And then these are relatively short term projects. So 24 months from the grant award, the projects must be completed. And the the application deadline is March 19th, so about two and a half weeks on that. Here's just a list of the types of projects that are eligible and not eligible. Really, it's looking for, you know, public recreation and trail facilities, you know, active or in natural type parks. You know, this doesn't pay for new play equipment at playgrounds, doesn't pay for, you know, sidewalk repair or repair of of really any infrastructure. It's looking for new amenities related to outdoor recreation. Our recommendation, given that we have a deadline to complete the park project, the the Ferguson overflow park project, we propose to to submit a grant for the full $150,000 to help offset our costs to those park improvements. Obviously, the full site improvements are listed here. The the parking and the restroom are already funded through a a CMAC grant. But we still need to construct the natural park. Bottom of the shoreline trail wayfinding, which would be eligible here and and other trailhead amenities. So we would seek the $150,000 to to help offset our cost of doing that. Again, that's the rendering. You you will be considering a an actual contract tonight with Blue Line Design to to formally begin engineering and designing the the park portion of this site. So again, our our requests would be $150,000, which is the maximum for these mid level projects. There is a category of projects over $2 million where you can request more, but this project doesn't doesn't quite meet that. And then we would use our proposed match as we've got some in kind work that that was preliminary site design, the concept master plan, the work that Blue Line is hopefully contracted to do staff time, project management, and then the other remaining funds that came forward as a council priority in the budget retreat. priority in the budget retreat to complete this project per our inter-local agreement with Salt Lake County. So we have substantial match funds for this, which makes it an appealing project for this year. We did take this to the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. We shared our priority with them and said, you know, it, it's, it's the most timely project this year to pursue the park improvements. However, we did ask for recommendations from them. They came up with a great list of recreation projects. So, so I've listed those here. And they're, you know, they, they range in, you know, trail wayfinding to, you know, multi-use path to signage at parks to pollinator garden. One committee member made a pretty detailed presentation on pollinator gardens and other things. I think these are all good projects worth, worth looking at moving forward. But given that we have a, a kind of a deadline to complete this park project and it's, it's a budget priority anyways, we, we still do feel like requesting funds for the, the Ferguson Overflow area is, is probably the best approach this year. And then we can look at projects like this moving forward. If, you know, if the full cost of that park is budgeted and we do end up receiving the grant, then that will free up some of that budget and we can either look at that as a budget savings or for other projects. So our recommendation is to proceed with the, the park improvements and, and utilize, hopefully utilize this grant to help offset our cost of completing that. But we wanted to bring this forward to the council for feedback and consideration and a recommendation before we proceed with that full grant application.
So one real quick question, Mike, a hundred fifty thousand. The match is on top of that. I mean, it's not right, the full grant from the state is for the hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, if we ask for a hundred and fifty, we have to put up a hundred and fifty.
So it's, it's three hundred thousand dollars for the, the project.
To ask for the full amount, yes.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Again, I, I really appreciate you taking it to the PTOSS committee. I think that's valuable for them to see the efforts and I, there's a couple items on the party list that I'm very supportive of personally. So I appreciate seeing that. Counsel, any questions on that moving forward? I know we've talked about it historically and it seems a logical thing to look at any means we can find for additional resources.
No, I, I like, I, I think, I think it's a good idea. I liked these, some of those suggestions from the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. That would certainly be a good place to look at future year requests.
Christine?
I, I have a, a couple of thoughts, mainly, mainly just a question, Mike. I know some of the residents that live in, in the neighborhood between big and little above Wasatch Boulevard, who maybe don't want the dog park, had made recommendations about having some kind of a key fob so that that dog park would only be utilized by residents of Cottonwood Heights. I'm guessing with the money that we'd be using from, if we were to get the outdoor rec money and the other money from Wasatch Front Regional Council would probably put some constraints on that. I'm just, just curious to, if I get the question again, how to answer it.
Yeah. I don't know the right answer. I think there's some broader concerns with a, a key fob system at a public park to only allow some people in and verify residency and who qualifies. But I would anticipate that, you know, if we're using State of Utah grant money, that, that we probably shouldn't look at limiting access to, to some over others.
I guess I bring that up because we'll have an open house and we'll have boards and we're going to want to.
And so the way we would apply for this is, you know, we can, even as Blue Line designs this park out, we have to build it as a public park. The Open Space Committee has recommended a dog park in the city and we've kind of landed on this site as, as an opportunity to do that. But, but we can still get mayor and council input on designing that site in the final, how it's designed and used. Right now, we're proceeding as, as a dog park. The county is supportive of that. We verified that. But for this grant, we'll be submitting this as a, a natural park area. And, you know, it's, it's, it's mainly a park to accompany a Bonneville Shoreline Trail, Trailhead and a Ferguson Canyon Trailhead.
Yeah, and it'll have just an off-leash area. But Christine brings a good point. And, and through my experience, I've found historically, as far as restricting use for something that has either state or county funds, there'll be some limitations. But I think even with that, it's not big enough to be a regional amenity. We are going to have to be very creative so it's not overrun as a regional attraction. That would be concerning. And we had that same problem for a couple of years, the Mountain View Park with the splash pad, it suddenly became a regional amenity and was overrun from non-residents. So I, that's an excellent point that we need to look at going forward in our design and our management of it because it's, it's not that big. Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mike. No further questions.
I got a real quick one. Sorry, Mayor. Really quick. When PTOSS meets again, could you ask the member that was interested in the pollinator garden, would that work in conjunction with a community garden? If there, if there's somebody motivated to spearhead that?
I guess, Mike, I might just jump in here. Tally, I know you asked this question before. And as I mentioned, I, I personally tried to push that idea at Ridgecrest with, with no backing. A butterfly garden, it seems to me is, is hands-off and the bees come and they pollinate. When you start introducing community gardens, I think without having any kind of interest, no one's expressed any interest. I've brought it up to the PTOSS. I, I think without somebody an advocate, I, I could bring it up again, but I brought it up with no interest. So.
Okay. No, that's great. It does. It takes a, an interested party to spearhead.
Yeah, I was involved with one at Wheeler Farm years ago and I was a director of, that was one of the areas I was over. So it's, it's, it's quite a project, but appreciate the suggestion and discussions. Scott?
Yeah, as I said, we, we've had bees in our garden, in our, in, in, on our house and that was fine for us. But I did notice that we have some other neighbors who are very much into community gardens. And when we had the hive back there, that was a major point of concern until they got a, quite a bit more education on, and actually being there. And so, yeah, I think it's a great idea that goes together, but I did notice that there were some significant, it might be a lot of people concerned about having the wonderful bees in there next to where they might be growing things. But anyway.
Yeah, I think our approach with the committee would be, you know, we, we kind of got a list, but what we would like to go back and have them prioritize that list and then, you know, come forward with a recommendation to the council as we consider future PTOSS-related projects, to have that list I showed kind of ranked and prioritized.
Yeah, I would love to see that prioritized because there's some things on that that have been discussed for years. It'd be really nice to see where those are ranked. Yeah, especially the, the trail pieces that, walking pieces.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Doug.
Quick, quick question. I know a big part of this is trying to mitigate the problems that we have at the Ferguson Trailhead Parking. I know that there's not a perfect solution. I'm hoping that this will help do that. I, I know that there's concern about people walking through, but then the, the parking is a big issue. And so it's kind of a multi-tiered, probably problem solver, I'm hoping. But I, I just hope the neighbors can help back this, this project so that they can feel like they can drive through their neighborhood safely without having all those cars packed in there. And so I, I'm hoping they understand that this is hopefully a, a partial, if not a, a large part of the solution for that mitigating the problems that they've seen in the past.
Well, for some of those that I've talked to, and I don't want to speak for Christine, they, they accept that, they appreciate that with what we approved as far as restricted parking, the way finding that needs to be part of this and the signage, the enforcement, it's, it's a multi-step process. But yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it again when we meet with the architects. Yeah. All right, item B is again, Mike, any final comments on Blue Line Corp for that? That, I guess that's could be under, is that under Matt's ship that handled that then? Matt, that's yours?
Yes, sir. That's just, that's the contract to move forward with the design and the city council meetings and the public meetings for the way this park is going to look the end of the day. So this is a contract for that.
All right. I think I understand, Tim, that we are required to have this project completed by the end of the year.
Yes, under our contract with the county, yes.
Is there any problems with that on the present course we're, we're on?
We, we will be pushing up to the edge for sure. Basically, we have just till the end of October. So, I mean, we are doing everything we can to get it done. This one's a little different because it's not federal money and federal guidelines. So this will move a lot quicker than the parking area.
Okay. Christine, go ahead. Oh, you froze.
If we don't hit that October date, then we go into twenty-twenty-two, is that right?
Uh, mainly the October date is just for, if the weather's good, we can still work. I mean, depends on the trail types, what we call out and everything that'll happen in there. I don't, I don't see a real problem with hitting the park, getting that done this year. We obviously will push very hard because of our agreement and we'll be working close with the county to make sure they understand where we are. But I think we're, we're, we're doing okay there.
I think they'll be understanding as long as we've, we're well into where.
We will definitely be under large construction when, you know, we'll be able to show a lot of progress for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Just real quickly, a couple of calendar items. Again, Thursday morning, we have our last work session with our lobbyists regarding legislative issues. And then you've probably all received notice, not on the schedule, but the Utah League of Cities and Towns is hosting this convention in April in St. George. But it has some strong restrictions as far as attendance, which include you have to have a negative COVID test and writing other things. So that is coming and of course could be either virtual or in person, but just for your information. All right, with that, and, and we're a couple minutes behind and we have a, a major challenge and getting through all the information on our next meeting. So I entertain a motion to adjourn the work session and reconvene with the Development Renewal Agency Business Meeting in five minutes.
I approve that we adjourn our work session and reconvene our CDRA meeting. It can be five minutes, it can be sooner. I'm good either way.
Well, as soon as we can, yeah.
Yeah.
If we have a second.
Second, sir.
Move a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. More important, any pros, it's unanimous. All right, we'll see you on the other side. Thank you, everyone.